Hello and welcome to the print. This is Farida Iftikhar and today we have with us Indrani Bhaduri who is the CEO and Head of Parak. Parak is a body under NCERT which is working on reforming the way students are being assessed in school education in India. Parak has recently submitted a report for bringing equivalence among all school education boards in India with the Ministry of Education. It has made several recommendations to completely overhaul the way assessment is being done right now and to align it with the recommendations of the new education policy 2020. Hello and welcome to the print ma'am. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you so much. Delighted.
First of all, we would like to know about the recent report, the equivalence report which Parak has submitted with the Ministry of Education. What are the recommendations and if you can just throw a light on that?
Okay, so you know, the Parak has been mandated, the establishment of Parak has been mandated by the National Education Policy 2020. And we are working for preparing standard norms and guidelines in respect of the assessment that is being done by the teacher, that is the formative assessment, the assessment being done by the board and also the large scale assessment. So these three are the primarily, you know, the categories of learning assessment that are being done at the school level. Now with regard to the board, as mandated by NEP 2020, Parak took up a research study with all the sixty-nine recognized boards. So we saw that across these boards, there's a lot of variability. You know, in terms of their functioning, in terms of their setting of the question paper, the types of question paper. So you know, when Parak is talking about equivalence, it is basically bringing about a comparability within the boards. We are not talking about the cloning of the boards. So how can these comparatives be, you know, established among the boards? So that it becomes student friendly. Our entire endeavor is to make it student friendly. So that I as a child, if I am studying in one particular board, then my mobility to the other board is not restricted. And if I am in one board and there's another child studying in another board, then the two results that are there, that needs to be comparable. So we are telling, we have defined equivalence in five parameters. That is the administration, the curriculum, assessment, infrastructure and inclusiveness. And Parak has given guidelines for how equivalence can be, you know, established in these five domains. And once the report has been out, we are also working very closely with the boards and we have organized workshops at the regional level, wherein the chairperson, the secretaries and other functionaries from the state boards have attended these workshops and all of them do, you know, there is a unison like, they all agree that yes, these changes that has been suggested in NEP 2020 needs to be implemented.
So ma'am, when we say like right now the equivalence is not there, what are the issues like students and assessment system and the mobility? Regarding the mobility is there, what are the issues we face right now?
Like I said that the biggest challenges in terms of the comparability in the assessment procedure. So when I as one board, I set up a paper and there is a second board, they set up a paper. So these two papers are not equivalent. So if they are not equivalent, then the scores that are there in one board cannot be compared to the other board. So this is the primary, you know, work that Parak is doing. So the first step that Parak has done is that after we have come out with the report and had deliberated with the, in detail with the report, the five domains that I told you about, how to bring equivalence in those. The first thing that we want to work on is bringing an equivalence in the domain of assessment. So in the domain of assessment, Parak is saying that, you know, there has to be a specific carder of paper setter. At present, what is happening is that if I am a teacher and I have a particular years of experience, I am given to set a paper. So but then paper setting is a very scientific manner. It needs to happen. We need to, I as a paper setter, I need to understand what is a question paper design? What are the blueprint and how from one blueprint I can have different question paper? So this understanding, we are working with the, you know, state board functionaries wherein we are doing the capacity building training program. For them, we are also coming out with another document which will give the guidelines for, you know, paper setting.
So it means like it's an attempt to create a pool of paper setter?
It is and like I said that we will be working with the state boards to train their master trainer. Definitely Parak cannot kind of, you know, train a pool of paper setter for each of the different state boards. In a particular state board, Parak can only train five to ten paper setter. And these master paper setter, they need to further train, give training to the others. So we are planning that in a caste model, we will develop these carders and each board should have their own paper setter. Parak is also, has also told that the board should have their, you know, integrated test management system, they need to develop. So when I, I as the board, I have a integrated test management system. It begins with having a question bank. So how these questions needs to, because another shift that NEP 2020 talks about is to make a shift from road memorization to competency based assessment. So if all the boards are following this competency based assessment, then again the equivalence will be achieved. So we are also working with the boards in helping them to develop a question bank. We have already told the boards that, you know, you need to develop the question bank. Parak will prepare a sample question bank which will help, which entails competency based assessment and which will help states boards to develop their own question bank.
So it means if we can say that similar guidelines to be followed to create a pool of paper setters and similar guidelines will be followed to create a question bank so that equivalence can come among the boards, right?
Yes, that's right. Because we want that this paper setting, the protocols that needs to be followed for setting a paper setter, those are standard protocols. And those standard protocols needs to be followed when I set a paper or you, you know, from another board, you set a paper. So if both of us are following the same standard protocols, then naturally there will be an equivalence. But if I randomize and you at your end randomize, then of course it will create chaos.
Yeah, so ma'am, also Parak has recommended in this report to give some weightage to the performance of students from class ninth to eleventh in their class twelfth report card, right? So what kind, how will that be achieved and what will be the weightage given to each of these classes?
We have, like if you see our report, we have given in detail how the weightages can be given, what should be the weightage given in grade nine? Because NEP 2020 takes the secondary stage in total. Okay, it's taken, it talks about, it has kind of given that the pedagogic stages needs to change from ten plus two. Previously it was a ten plus two system that we used to follow. And now we are following five plus three plus C plus four. And the four is the secondary stage, right? So this secondary stage, so now what we have proposed in our report, recommended in our report of equivalence is that, that we should not, you know, kind of assess the child or the student based on only one particular exam. A one-shot examination and then talking about the, you know, telling the child that you have secured this much, that means your learning level is at this much. That's not perfect. It has to be, I need to, you know, assess the child over a period. So this, it is, it is never, the performance assessment is never a one-shot activity. It has to be assessed continuously. So this continuity in the assessment, what should be the period of assessment and how it should be done, that is what we have talked about. So we have kind of linked the summative assessment that the board does along with the formative assessment. Like I said that Parak has also given the, you know, guidelines for the holistic progress card. So the holistic progress card at the secondary level is also linked to the, you know, this board's equivalence.
Ma'am, if you can tell our viewers about submissive, a submissive and formative assessment also, like to make them understand better.
All right, to be, you know, very rudimentary, at the very rudimentary level, formative assessment is something that I as a teacher, I do along with my students during the process of my transaction. When learning teaching is taking place in the classroom, along with that learning teaching, when I do the assessment to find out whether the child has understood whatever has been transacted or if he or she has understood, what is it that the child has understood? What are the gaps? Where is it that the child needs to be supported? Where is it that the child needs to be scuffed folded? So those thing is to be understood using a formative assessment. When I talk about summative assessment, all the unit tests, the half release, the annual exams, the board examinations, these are summative assessments.
So the idea is to consider both of them while evaluating students, right?
NEP 2020 says that we should give more prominence to formative assessment as compared to summative assessment. And this is the dialogue that Parak is having with all the state boards.
And how is the, what is the reaction of state, how they are responding now?
They all agree, they all agree. And when we had workshops, when we told them that how the competency based assessment questions looks like and how does it differ from a road learning assessment? And how, how does a road learning assessment is only a one step, you know, thinking that the child is doing, whereas when it comes to competency based assessment, it is a multi-layered, you know, a tiled approach in thinking that the child is using and that is what we want to make use of. So they are very happy, they want to make change.
Okay.
And we are all happy with the, you know, NEP 2020. They, the two main things that NEP 2020 talks about in terms of assessment, one is to make the shift from road memorization to competency based assessment. And the second to have, give more emphasis on formative assessment than summative assessment. Both the recommendations have been very well taken and very well accepted by the state boards.
Ma'am, tell us more about the holistic progress card.
All right, so like I said that the board exams, they are for the, you know, a certification, they are norm referenced examination. When I'm talking about the holistic progress card, these are something that the teacher does in the classroom. So when I am doing in, as a teacher in the classroom, I am doing assessment, I would like to assess the learner on whatever I have transacted, whatever learning teaching I have done with the learner. Whereas in the board, we have only three hours and within these three hours, I kind of pick up, pick and choose that if a child knows one, two, three, then the child is ready to be certified. Whereas that is a certification, so that examination is very different from what we are seeing in the teacher based assessment or the holistic progress card. So this holistic progress card, it tries to capture the uniqueness of the child. As a child, what is the, which are the potential, what are my strengths? So the holistic progress card and remember, again, NEP 2020 has made a shift. It is talking about a progress card, not reporting. I am not as a teacher, I am not reporting to the, reporting on the child. I am talking about what has been the progress made in the learning by the child. So holistic progress card basically documents, helps document the learning journey of the child. It is evidencing how much learning and Parak has made the, prepared the holistic progress card as per NEP 2020 for the foundational stage, for the preparatory stage, for the middle and as well as for the secondary. And in holistic progress card, what we are proposing is that, that it has to be, the assessment has to be holistic in the sense that first it, it, the, it should not be only with the teacher. There should be self-assessment, there should be peer assessment and even the parent should have, you know, an understanding of how the learning of the child, parent being the caregiver, but the student. So how the learning of the child is taking place in the, you know, schools? So unless this involvement of the parent or the community is there, it's very important that, you know, I as a parent, and this is more so from the rural, from the lower socioeconomic, that I understand that the school is helping my child. If this understanding does, you know, does not percolate, then I will never value the school. So you know, this holistic progress card, it not only acts as a pedagogic, it not only first evidences the learning journey of the child, it is, it also, secondly, it also is a pedagogical tool for the teacher to understand how well my transactions are happening, whether I am, whatever I'm transacting, whatever, you know, the content I am sharing in the classroom, whether the child is able to internalize it, whether the child is able to internalize and apply it in the daily situation. And it also is, it also helps in bringing, breaking the wall that at present is there between the community and the school. So that goal is dissolving because we want the community, like it's popularly said that it takes a village to educate a child. So the, you know, the community needs to understand, yes, that this education is important for the child and he or she must attend the school.
And ma'am, what is the status of the implementation of HPC or the holistic progress card right now?
Okay, so like you know that, you know, in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, we first, I want to clarify this, that the holistic progress card was not just prepared in a classroom with Parak only sitting and, you know, taking out a holistic progress card and then kind of trusting it on the, you know, states. No, it was a collaborative endeavor. So initially we had discussions with the states. We deliberated on how it should be done. So all the state officials were involved then, you know, it was a lot of back and forth of the documents going. And then later on, what happened is once we prepared the draft holistic progress card, it was also piloted in the districts. We piloted in all the districts, in each district, five schools we piloted it. And only after piloting, because this is a huge thing that change we are proposing. So it had to be piloted. So only after piloting, we finalized it, looking at the results. And then what we did is then again, we had the training of the, you know, state level functionaries in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four and through the project Vidya Sagar one point O. And now this year, the hundred day celebration of our honorable Prime Minister Modi ji that is going on. So in that, we have started the project Vidya Sagar two point O, wherein we are going to, at the district level. And we are, you know, looking at the district level functioning, functionaries and kind of helping them to understand the holistic progress card and how to implement it. To begin with, we have started the translation and many of the states have, because holistic progress thought for it to be successful, first and foremost, it has to be translated in the regional languages for the teachers to accept. So this translation work is also on.
Okay, and ma'am, if it is going to implement at like preparatory stage or elementary stage this time in two thousand?
We have told that maybe this time they can start with the foundational and the preparatory and maybe some states because, you know, the states are at various levels of implementation. Some of the states, they have kind of conducted the training at the district level for all of their participants. The states are, you know, still grappling with the translation process. So we have said that at least aim for, you know, the foundational, preparatory and the middle this year. Maybe next year we will do the secondary.
Since education is a state subject ma'am and implementing something as big as HPC or even the recommendation for equivalence, is it a challenge for Parak also like to bring everyone on the same level?
Like I said that Parak did not initially, you know, it wasn't that I, Parak alone developed the HPC. It was a, right from the beginning, it was a collaborative venture. All the state participated in developing. But then of course, if you see what we have written, we have told the states that if you want to, you know, adapt or adopt the HPC, you are most welcome. And if you see the HPC that has been, that has come out by, that has been out by CBSC, they have also written that, you know, it has been adopted from, adapted from Parak.
Yeah, and what is the status of HPC's implementation in CBSC schools ma'am right now?
They have started with the foundation.
This time?
Yeah.
Got it, got it. And another thing, ma'am, I would like to understand since in a country like ours, right? And HPC and many other initiatives are like digital, right? Online based and majority of our schools are government schools, right? So what is the plan for that, like to implement such things in those schools?
You know, even Farida, I would like to say that, you know, if you go to the rural schools, some of the rural schools, the resources that they have, because through Samagra, we are funding the states, MOE, Ministry of Education is funding the states. And some of the rural schools, they have smart, most of the rural schools, I would say that they have smart classrooms. They have, you know, those, the LCD interactive, you know, screens. Now, yes, so what we are proposing, of course, technology, it is affecting all of us. You know, like even my, not just my academic activities, but my leisure time activities is also influenced by technology. And technology is also determining how much time I spend in what activity. It's what the technology is telling me.
Respectively to age groups.
Yes, so you cannot do away with technology. It has kind of seeped it in, seeped in the, you know, entire fabric of our existence. So HPC also, we, we, we plan to digitalize it. So we are planning to, you know, kind of link the HPC of the child with the APAR ID of the child and try to kind of, but then that is in, maybe next year, which we will be doing, not this year, but then that is what the plans are.
When you mention APAR ID, it means like the academic bank of credit is where their credits will be stored for higher education, right?
Exactly, it's the, the way we have the digital occurred at present, wherein the certificates of grade tenth and grade twelve are stored. So similarly, we will also have the HPC stored in the digital format. So you know, actually you can then evidence the progress of the child. And this HPC, it is not just the tick mark that we do. Like I said that we are, through the HPC, we are actually documenting how the child has performed in a particular task. And then like as a teacher, what I'm supposed to do is, I'm supposed to prepare a task, map it to the competencies, there are different competencies for the foundational, preparatory, middle and secondary. And after I map it to the competencies, I am supposed to assess the child and then find out whether the child performance is at the beginner level, at the proficient level or at the advanced level. So I can also see that how the learning of the child is progressing. If he or she had been at the beginner level in term one, whether there has been an improvement in term two. So if there has not been, so I as a teacher, do I need to change my teaching methodologies? So it is, like I said, that it is not just documents, the learning journey of the child, it is a pedagogical tool as well for the teacher and it is also bridging the gap between the community and the school.
Yeah, ma'am, Parak had recently written to, I think two, three months back, had written to the states regarding HPC. I think we had a conversation about it also earlier. So did some states responded, respond back like in positive way?
Yes, yes, we, like I said that last year, we conducted the state level, you know, interaction and if you are there in the social media, you can also see how the teachers are kind of, you know, giving their feedback for HPC. And now this year, when I'm going at the district level, we have already had workshops with Chhattisgarh, with Himachal, with the, with some of the KVs. So all, everywhere we, we are getting very positive results. But one thing, you know, in education, I think it, we should not, this is what I feel that we should not kind of bring a radical change. So you know, I'm reminded of a slogan which says that, shanay kanta, shanay panta, shanay parbat langani, shanay vidya, shanay vritti, panchitani, shanay, shanay, meaning tread slowly because you are treading on my dreams. So we are treading, so it is the child's dream that is at stake. I cannot have a radical change. I have to see slowly how these inputs create change. And but of course, the reaction is very positive.
Ma'am, would you like to tell us some more projects we will see in future Parak doing some more things? Which are in the pipeline?
So one important thing that Parak is at in the pipeline is, you know, we feel that a course in psychometrics, psychometrics is something that as a course in a regular college, it's still not there. So Parak is trying to build that psychometrics and assessment course. We have already prepared the modules and the next thing that we are working on is that teacher assessment. So and that is something that we are still working on, it's in the pipeline. It's a big thing, but yes, and again, we will go shanay, shanay in that.
So when we say teacher assessment, like some guidelines for that?
Yes, guidelines and we are thinking that how we can develop a teacher assessment. So the teacher competencies document is already out. So how can I from Parak align it to the teacher competencies that have been given? So we are working on that and another thing that we are working on is the Parak Rajse Sarekship twenty twenty-four, which is scheduled on fourth of December. So we are working with the states and So we are working with the states and uh C B S C will be administering this uh Parak Rajseey Survey.
National Assessment, you mean, right?
Uh uh National Achievement Survey.
Yes, NAS, right?
Yeah, NAS twenty twenty four and this, uh the, the present Parak Rajseey Survey Shift twenty twenty four. It will kind of give a baseline of competencies that the students have at the end of the. Foundational, at the, that is in grade three, at the end of preparatory, that is grade six. And at the end of middle, that is uh grade nine. So we will assist student learning for foundational in grade three, uh for preparatory in grade six and grade nine for the middle. And this because N E P twenty twenty has just come out, N C F S C and N C F F S are also in place. So we want to find out what is the, and we have, uh the competencies have been defined at the different stages, for the different stages. So we want to find out that what is the baseline of competencies. So given that's Parak Rajseey twenty twenty four, uh and an understanding of the baseline of competencies. The teacher training can be, uh you know, uh like develop and worked out. Uh and of, of course, that what, how, what are the policy changes that requires to be done at the state level? How the textbooks needs to change, that can also be worked out.
If I am not wrong, ma'am, this is the first time that uh class ninth will also be covered in NAS.
Yes, of course, uh like traditionally, we used to do it for three, five, eight and ten. But because of the national, uh National Education Policy twenty twenty, aligning it with it. We are doing it because we want to assess, like I said, that we want to assess the competencies after each stage. So that's why we are doing it at three, six and nine.
So this time it will happen stage wise, right? The end of every stage, we can say. Got it. Thank you so much for joining us, ma'am. It was a very informative session with you. Thanks a lot for joining the print.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Pleasure is all mine. Thank you.